Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the School District of the City of Dearborn, regular Board meeting, Monday, June 19, 2023. It is 7:02. I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Moses?
Here.
Trustee Pachacar?
Here.
Trustee Watts here, President Thorpe.
Here. Next item.
Fledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Bob Main Farage, Mr. Adam Martin, Ms. Denise Sore, Mr. Thomas Wall will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Superintendent Ducktine?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the last board meeting for the current school year. I want to start with my agenda items, which are, we do every month. We have some retirements. I want to both congratulate and thank them for their many years of service. If we can hold the applause to the end. Susan Briggs, 25 years. Amira Fadlala, 29 years of service. Mona Jalul, 30 years of service. Catherine Shrop, 25 years of service. And Danette Thornfelt, over 25 years of service. If we can show our appreciation to those. And I'm going to move down my list, Mr. President. Thank you. So I also want to mention it is an agenda item. We do have the ADSA Administrator's Contract on here for approval. This evening, it did go to the members that there was a vote of 99% in favor by their membership, and so it is on the agenda for potential approval tonight. We also continue to negotiate with the other three major groups, and we have two other union groups, and it's been a busy year for the negotiating team, so we continue to move forward with that in a positive manner. And again, I've said it before, you know, the foundation allotments that we give to the state, we want to make sure that we are giving back to all of our employees in all classifications across the district. So I just wanted to mention that. Okay. Next, I want to introduce a couple individuals that I have the highest respect for. They come from the Michigan Association of Superintendents and School Administrators. Dr. Tina Kerr, Ms. Angie McArthur, and there's three individuals with her, Haley, Chelsea, and Kim. And the Superintendent Association is a great association. I've been on the Board now for four years, just like the Board is a member of the MASB, where they advocate for public education across the state. This Association of Superintendents does that. And the fact that I've been able to be on there advocating for public education, budgets, things that are going on in Lansing, it also gives our Dearborn students an edge and an advantage with the constant information flow. So I'd like to call Dr. Kerr up, who has done a great job leading the Association along with Ms. McArthur. She not only has led us through the pandemic, superintendents, because it's been tough, and we can all recognize that, and I know superintendents are very appreciative and administrators, the support she has provided, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to point out, too, that to me, it's very important, but something that she started when she was the Assistant Executive Director was the Women in Leadership, and it's been very successful across the state, and I know we've had some of our administrators attend it, and that conference has now gone to a very positive area across the state as we promote, you know, women in leadership positions in education. So we have her here, and then we have Ms. Angie McArthur, the current president of MASA, and I have the highest respect for her. I've enjoyed working with her over the last four years. And she came all the way down from, all the way down from the UP. She's not only MASA president, but the Eastern Upper Peninsula ISD Superintendent. So I want to welcome them and thank them for their service across the state.
First of all, obviously, I want to thank Angie. She did a week-long trip, but more importantly, having had the opportunity as the ED for the past three years to work with such high-quality leaders is truly a blessing. And that's part of what keeps me wanting to come back to work every day, as I'm sure both of them know, when they're working with children and doing the right things by kids in our state. So I also want to thank Glenn, because one of the things that we have to keep in mind is, he was selected by his peers across the state to serve on our Board. And they go through an election process, much like all of you do, and it is truly an honor when they get selected out of 564 other leaders to be on the Executive Board. And then his peers on the Executive Board have asked that he move into the position of president for this next year. So again, it's truly an honor to be here. I continue to learn from you every day, and I appreciate all the hard work. But I also want to commend this community. What a great honor to have your superintendent help lead education in the state of Michigan. And that really says a lot about the kind of community and the kind of district that you've managed to continue to grow here in Dearborn. So thank you for allowing him to serve us the rest of the state, and I'm looking so forward to working with you, Glenn.
Thank you for allowing us a few moments of your board meeting tonight. I've had the distinct privilege of serving as president this last year of MASA. MASA provides support to the state's public school superintendents and first-line administrators through advocacy, through professional learning, and mentorship. Dr. Maleko's voice at our board meetings and our council meetings is so well-respected, and I'm just honored that I can thank him, one, for that voice, also for his dedication for Students First, but also as being a friend and a counsel when needed. So thank you, and my role here tonight is to pass the gavel. I'm super excited to see your leadership over the next year and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Your gavel is so new and shiny, and mine is old and beaten up. Congratulations, Dr. Maleko.
Thank you very much. And I look, again, thank Ms. McArthur and Dr. Kerr for coming, spending all that time and their great leadership across the state, and again, it's a great organization. So thank you for taking the time, and I look forward to more things that we're going to do to support students in public education, for Dearborn students especially, and for students across the state of Michigan. Okay, so I will go down my list here. And next, we have the Exchange Academic Awards, and I think Mr. Don Mack is here to present those awards to students. Thank you. Is that better?
Yeah. Greetings. My name is Don Mack, the current president of the Exchange Club of Dearborn. I am joined this evening by Exchange Board and Dearborn School Board Member, Patrick Dambrosio. And I would like to recognize at this time our superintendent as a member also. Thank you. Foundation Treasurer, Andrew Mazzara, is unable to be with us this evening, convalescing from a broken leg, a broken ankle, but he's with us in spirit. First, I wish to thank the Board of Education and the School District Administration for permitting the Exchange Club to present its Academic Excellence Awards to tonight's meeting, as we are pleased to recognize the 2023 valedictorians of Dearborn's three comprehensive high schools. We also want to thank the high school principals and Executive Director, Adam Martin, for their help in administering this awards program. It is greatly appreciated. The Exchange Club of Dearborn has been in existence for nearly 100 years. Throughout these years, the men and women of Exchange have raised funds for many local community programs and projects. Many of the programs are aimed at developing tomorrow's leaders. This evening, we present the 2023 Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Awards. This year's valedictorians, named by their high schools, will be given a one-time $1,500 cash gift to be used for education or any other purpose. This year, we have a delightful situation where two outstanding Edsel Ford High School scholars are named co-valedictorians for their graduating class. In this instance, the co-valedictorians will share the $1,500 cash gift. The Academic Excellence Award Program aims to encourage and reward high scholastic achievement and assist recipients with the cost of furthering their education. And now, it is my honor to present the cash gift to each of our 2023 valedictorians. The valedictorian and award recipient, Saint Zainab Jabro. The next valedictorian and award recipient we recognize is from Fortson High. Ibrahim Galami, or Galmi, sorry, who is unable to accept this award tonight due to a family travel, so we are pleased to present the award to his principal, Hayem Al Kadri. Finally, the co-valedictorians and award recipients from Edsel Ford High, Salma Awabali and Miriam Al Segir, accompanied by Principal Reema Hassan. One more bit of business. There is one catch, however. Sometime within the next year, each recipient and a high school representative are to attend a local Exchange Club luncheon. We have them every Tuesday as our guests, and let our members know how you're doing in the next phase of your education or your life. We will contact the recipients in the months ahead to find a convenient time for their visit. Again, congratulations to the award recipients and their families, and thank you, too, to the School Board and School Administration for their help and continuing support.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'm going to call, thank you. Congratulations, students. Next, I'm going to call up Dr. Swayden and students that are on the Advisory Council for the Superintendent Student Advisory Council Annual Review and Update Presentation. And I got to just say, this started eight years ago when I first became superintendent, and is truly one of my favorite groups to associate with in the district every month, and via WhatsApp and other things in between. So I love seeing them in the schools, and they're doing great work, the leadership here. Student voice is so important to us.
Good evening, everyone, Dr. Maleko and School Board. We're up here today to kind of give you a report of our year in the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. I'm Thomas Bessick. I'm from Dearborn High School. I'm an 11th grader, going on 12.
My name is Aya Mugne. I am a rising senior at Dearborn High School.
Hi, my name is Aya Chhab. I am a rising junior at Henry Ford Early College.
Hi, my name is Jenna Dachlala, and I'm a rising junior at DHS.
All right. This year, our council consists of members of all three high schools, Dearborn High, Edsel Ford, and Fortson, including Henry Ford Early College, Michael Berry, and DCMST. We had about 25 members this year, and we held meetings about once a month at each of these locations and ASC.
So some background information of SSAC is we are the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. We serve as the student voice in the Dearborn School Administration. Throughout the years, we coordinate and participate in several activities centered around promoting social-emotional learning and community outreach. Starting in the fall, members meet monthly to discuss district issues such as school improvement and student empowerment with Dr. Maleko, Dr. Swayden, and Mrs. Musa. We are continuously trying to improve as a group, solve student concerns, and jump on any initiatives we are given.
All right. So each year, we choose about four to five topics that our council is interested in either making a change for or just garnering some more attention towards it. So one of our main service activities is on Martin Luther King Day. And this year, we went around to businesses either in Dearborn or around Dearborn, and we collected donations from something that you might be familiar with, specifically the homeless shelter at the NSO, which is the Neighborhood Service Association in downtown Detroit, as well as the Man and the First Step Domestic Violence Shelter.
This year, we also worked with middle schoolers at Dearborn High. We invited Bryant Middle School, SUDSAC, kids to offer insight on high school life. SUDSAC is essentially just the middle school group of SSAC. They work with the executive directors. And we had a breakfast with them. We included a Q&amp;A session and even a tour of the school, and they were able to, you know, ask us any questions they may have about school life, the clubs we may have, the different experiences we may offer, just to kind of, you know, acclimate them to the environment. Another thing that we want to do next year is kind of increase the involvement with the middle schoolers in our efforts, so like, including them in the service projects we do in a way that they feel empowered to.
All right. So another main initiative that we focus on is Care to the Core Day, which you may be familiar with, and it runs through students as young as elementary schoolers all the way up to our graduating seniors. And we really focus on social-emotional learning that these conversations aren't, are talked about in classes, but we wanted to make sure there was a specific day for it so students could give their full attention to that on this day. And I don't know if it's connected, but we have a photo of students going through conversations on SEL. And on this side, you can see that we also work with middle schoolers on mental health-based reflection assignments. And with that, it's a great opportunity for our middle schoolers to have a peer-to-peer experience rather than just a student-teacher experience, which gives them, which basically allows them to feel connected to the assignments that we put in front of them. We also worked with students with disabilities, and we helped them with working on tasks as independently as we please. And we also urge for the Board of Education to focus on giving students an opportunity to either tutor their peers for incentive or shadow teachers, so that in the long run, we can have more staff members in Dearborn Public Schools, and it'll just benefit all around the teachers, the students, and the students who are getting helped by their peers.
So not only did the Student Advisory Council work on initiatives, but we also offered valued feedback on the library book review, the district strategic plan, school lunches, school safety, and behavior.
So as well as Dearborn students, we not only participate in student voice on the district level, but also on the state level with the Michigan Department of Education Student Advisory Council, which is a group of high school students from all over Michigan who meet every month with the state superintendent, Dr. Michael Rice, to discuss and find solutions to common social issues faced in the school setting. On the MD SEC, we are creating the Safe Space Resource, which serves as a handbook for Michigan educators and administrators to create a more inviting and inclusive classroom environment for students of all backgrounds. It is important to note that there are several Dearborn Public School students on the MD SEC, which is more membership than most participating districts. Along with that, we met in April with Dr. Rice in Lansing to speak more about school violence, as well as different social issues faced in the classroom environment. And we've been doing a lot of important and really good work on the MD SEC. So before we move on to a different item in our presentation, I'd just invite, like to invite you guys to ask any questions about the SSAC or the MD SEC's efforts. Do you guys have any questions? About the MD SEC or the SSAC?
Trustee Watts.
What grade you guys are in as well? It was very quiet. I couldn't hear you.
So I'm a rising junior at DHS.
Okay.
I'm a rising senior.
I'm a rising senior at DHS as well.
And I'm a rising junior at Henry Ford Early College.
All right. Thank you very much.
So we did have other students from the other high schools also work with them on the presentation, but unfortunately, they ended up having to go out of town, which is why they're not here. But their voice is here, though, with these guys.
Any other trustees have questions for the students?
I just have a comment. The students have done a great job, and I learn from them each and every day. We want to continue to expand student voice in the district. And, you know, we also had a national presentation at the National School Board Association, and the Michigan Association has now recruited us, I know Dr. Swayden and some of the students, for training that they want to do for other school districts. So again, we want to continue to value the importance of student voice. The students, you've done a great job all year, and it's been a pleasure.
Thank you for serving on the committee. We hope you have a great summer.
If we can add, for all the parents that are here, we'd really love for parents to encourage their kids to be leaders in the school and to apply to the SSAC. And I know also, at the high school level, the principals have their own leadership group. So we want to make sure to involve students as much as possible and to encourage them.
And before the presentation is over, I wanted to take this opportunity to mention a great summer activity that some of our students in the district qualify for. There is a government agency called Museums for All that provides free or reduced admission to over 55 statewide museums and over 1,000 museums nationwide. This offer applies to students of a certain economic bracket, but I encourage all students to explore local historical gems this summer. The English versions of this flyer can be found on the district's website, the media, for those who want to find more information about this amazing offer.
And Jenna made the flyer. So she is the one who came up with it, and she wants to, so it doesn't matter, say that you put it together.
Yeah, Dr. Swayden encouraged me to make this flyer, so I was happy to contribute something to our community.
All right. So thank you, Board, for your time, and thank you, Dr. Maleko, Dr. Swayden, and Ms. Musa, who is here, for giving us the platform to share our voice, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Next, I have Ms. Farage that's coming up with some of the aspiring administrators.
I will remind the Board that we are in the middle of a translation, so make sure you're close to your microphones if you're speaking, so we can pick everyone's voices up clearly.
We're doing the ASR or Aspire?
Aspire.
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 Aspire. Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Thorpe, Board Trustees, and Dr. Maleko. I ask the teachers who are present here from the aspiring administrators program for this cohort to come up, to be recognized by the Board, which is a tradition we started last year, and I think that's the least they can get a recognition. And so for those teachers who completed this year's cohort, they went through several sessions on a monthly basis. And as you know, our strategic plan has a focus area that's called Talent Development. And under that focus area, we have a goal, which is to promote our teachers and build their leadership skills. This was also an identified area by the CAGNI review that we did very well on. They often identify the areas of excellence and also areas of improvement, so this was one of the areas we were highlighted for. We have, I believe this is like the 15th or 17th year that we've provided this program. Teachers from various buildings had the opportunity to apply for the aspiring, and that takes place in June, so that we will be sending out the applications for next year. We had around 20 participants for this year. Of the 20, 12 to 13 completed their program and earned their certificates. We offer monthly interactive sessions, as I have mentioned. They are presented by district departments and leaders, very often more than one speaker. The departments that presented included the principals' panel, what does principalship looks like, and assistant principals' panel. We had a finance department group presenting operations, communications, school improvement, and assessment. We also had special topics and other topics we have selected for them. So I really want to thank all our cabinet leaders who came forward and supported our aspiring administrators. The program concludes with a capstone project that they take the leadership on, and they lead in their building. And they take the leadership throughout the year, and then they present it to a panel in central office before they earn their certificate. And also, they have a shadowing experience where they can go for one half-day experience where they can go for one half-day, and they follow an assistant principal or a principal to have the experience on what would school principalship looks like. Again, the successful completion of this group is to be recognized, because this was over and beyond what they do on a daily basis, and they do volunteer to do this after school to grow their leadership. And no wonder we have such talented group of teachers in our district who get hired and are promoted through the channels to be leaders, principals, and central office staff. I'm going to ask them to say their name, which school they're from, and one or two will say a couple comments.
Hello, my name is Deena Assad, autism coach for the district.
Hi, and I'm Miriam Alloway. I am one of the AST behavior specialists in the district.
Good evening. I'm Fatun Sob. I'm the interim special ed coordinator. I'm also the transition coordinator.
Good evening. I'm Imaan Ismail. I'm one of the ELD specialists at Edsel Ford High School.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Zaleski. I'm a CTE teacher at Michael Berry.
Hi, I'm Melinda Beazey. I'm a teacher at Snow Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Sophia Abdullah. I'm a teacher at Salina Intermediate.
Good evening. I'm Jim Radcliffe, a social studies teacher at OL Smith.
Good evening. I'm Angela Altamonte. I'm a coach interventionist at Fortson High School. And I'm gonna just take a moment to say a few things about the program. I just wanted to make a comment that the program shared with me, and I believe the rest of us too, the knowledge and experience of what we would need to be a future administrator. This invaluable insight through the program supported me for my capstone project, which was to approve, get approved a new elective for high school, which was a leadership elective. I believe through this class, they'll be able to find their voice and continue to impact things at their school and in the community. And I wouldn't have had the courage if not for my cohort and the support of this program. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
I do want to thank Adam Martin, Lamise, Mike, and Maisam for all their support as we led the program as a team. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to move along. I've put out communications on social media message. Today, we celebrate Juneteenth. I want to acknowledge the many struggles that Black Americans have faced to overcome bigotry and racism. I want to commend all who have fought to correct these injustices, protect civil rights, and ensure equality for all. The many achievements and accomplishments of Black Americans have played an integral part in the success and growth of our country. I applaud their contributions to this great land and their vital role in weaving the fabric of our nation. I join together with all who commemorate this day and wish them, wish everyone a happy celebration today. Thank you. We have completed another school year. I know we have lots of staff members who are here. I know we have a lot of our teachers. We have administrators. We have support staff. And I know we have a lot of parents. If we could just, really just to recognize everyone who's here for the completion of a year and making a difference in the lives of our students. And of course, we have our students, and I want to thank them as well. If we could just applause for everyone that's here, and of course, the Board of Education for their leadership in the district. I have one more item, a statement I'd like to mention on graduation. Again, congratulations to our graduates. This year, just under 1,600 Dearborn Public School students took part in seven different commencement programs. We, as a district, are proud of the accomplishments and success of all our students and wish them the very best. Congratulations to our students, the staff that supported them, and their families that were there to support them. I want to also read a portion of my commencement speech that I gave at the high schools. There are people who feel we have reached a point where civil discourse and the ability to reach a compromise is gone. I don't feel that way. Maybe it's because I'm an educator, and educators see the brighter side, always seek a solution. However, I think it has more to do with the time I spend with the students in our schools, and we can see some students right here who just showed us that. I see them full of hope, full of optimism, full of dreams for a brighter and better future. That attitude is contagious. And, and as I stated, students don't waste this moment. I stated that to them in graduation. Be those innovators that we all know you can be. Don't be afraid to push that reset button on civility and kindness and show everyone that change is possible. I always have and will continue to be a person who seeks solutions, not confrontation. As a principal, administrator, now superintendent, I have met with hundreds of students, parents, and community members in order to build relationships, and I think that is something that we need to continue to do. And that's why the student voice and interacting with students, to me, is so important. In addition, I want to mention some other things about the graduation. Each year, we invest significant time, effort, and resources, and we put a similar statement out to what I'm going to say next. Resources to meticulously plan and execute exceptional graduation experiences for our students and families. Many hours of planning are needed to ensure programs run smoothly and efficiently. We share in the disappointment that an Edsel Ford student experienced due to the circumstances that led to the student not being able to take part in the commencement program. As a school district, we look at every situation as an opportunity for learning. From a district perspective, we have reflected on what occurred and will evaluate all of our high school procedures and practices to see if there may be room to make changes in the future. We, as an educational organization, are always looking for ways to improve and do better for our students, staff, and school community. All the students who walked at the graduation ceremony adhere to the rules and regulations regarding commitments in order to walk during the graduation ceremony. The week leading up to graduation, especially the day of graduation, is very intensive for our staff. Oh, I'm sorry. Slow, slow down. I apologize. Yeah, okay. The week leading up to graduation, and especially the day of graduation, is very intensive for our building administrators and staff. We have to make decisions in a short and timely manner to do what we think is best for each student as an individual and the student body as a whole. The district planned to hold a recognition ceremony in the summer for students who required additional summer classes in order to be eligible to graduate. We will hold the ceremony on August 21 at 5:30, and the student, along with other students who complete the graduation requirements, will have an open invitation. The principal at Edsel, at Edsel Ford and I have already reached out to the student's family, and they accepted the invitation. Decisions that impact a small number or even one student can send a message to all their students about the culture, climate, and expectation of a school. The actions of staff, students, and parents play a big role in building a culture and climate that respects and is fair to all students. As we close out the school year, we hope all our students and families enjoy a safe and restful summer filled with joy and relaxation. Thank you.
Anything else?
And that is it for me. Thank you.
All right.